Room three.
So welcome to tonight's city council meeting of Tuesday, September the sixteenth. It's two fifteen. We just finished our holdco meeting for the city. And first order of business is that we go in camera to discuss certain matters we can't talk about in public. And then at four PM, we're going to resume in open session where we'll begin our regular scheduled meeting. So first order of business, I'm looking for a motion to go in camera, Councillor Carrillo, Second of Eye Councillor Newistag. All those in favor? Okay, and that's unanimously carried. So we will now resume in the museum and return back at four PM. Thank you.
September the 16th. We just had our in-camera meeting, which is the meeting we're not allowed to have in public, where certain matters are dealt with with city council, and our legal, and our staff to give us information. Now, we're going to resume in open session. And I know we've got a whole bunch of people here, and we've got some ballplayers and hockey players and their families. We're excited to have you here, so we're going to get to you very shortly. First order of business is the singing of Oh, Canada, and I'd like to first introduce our singer. There's Reese coming up to the microphone. I'll make sure we're going to just give you a portable mic, Reese, and this way it'll be the height that you're comfortable with. And we're going to have our social media tachana take some pictures of you as well. So let me introduce you, Reese. Reese is 12 years old. She's in grade seven at Prince Philip School. She's taking piano and singing lessons at Niagara Rock Academy. Her singing career started about three years ago when she sang the National Anthem for City Hall, City Council at City Hall. Since then, she's performed at the Niagara Falls Remembrance Day service and did a great job. The Niagara Ice Dogs, and most recently was honored to play at the Heaters Heroes Event at Oaks Park. So, we're really excited to have you back today, Reese. Reese Patterson, on behalf of the City of Niagara Falls, welcome. And whenever you're ready, ask everyone, stand if you can, please.
Oh, Canada, our home and native land, true patriot love, and all of us commend. With glowing hearts, we see thee rise, the true north strong and free. From far and wide, oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. God keep our land glorious and free. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Thank you.
Reese, Reese, before you run away, Reese, I just want to say on behalf of all of us here, that was, I had to double-check my notes, 12 years old, well done. I'm proud, you made me proud to be Canadian. Thank you. Next, next up, ladies and gentlemen, is our traditional Indigenous meeting opening, and with the aim of educating our community, I'd like to invite Michelle Elise Burnett, who is Bear Clan, Thunderbird Clan, and Métis, to join us to share her testimony, as we acknowledge and thank the Indigenous peoples who were stewards of this land for millennia before us.
Bonjour, Québécois, Sago. Bonjour. Na'vi Kopa, Nadijina Kaze, Makwado'um, Nimki Dodo'um, Naga Don Jaba, Métis, Agonkwin Kwayen Dau. My spirit name is she who's is in the center. My French-English name is Michelle Elise Burnett. I'm Bear Clan, Thunderbird Clan, and I am from the Naga region, and I'm also a Métis with Nipissing Agonkwin roots. So, as we begin your day today, I would like to share Indigenous ways of knowing and values on how to live with our kin in the natural world, and of course, with one another. This way, we can bring our minds together and start in a very positive and good way. In our culture, we teach that every decision that we make today, be it personal, governmental, corporate, that we must consider the impact it will have on the next seven generations, the impact that it will have on our grandchildren's, great-grandchildren. So, we strive for living Minno Bimatsu'ing, to live a good life, to be in balance with all life forces, to live a life that matters. It's about living from the heart and leading with love. It's about seeing, listening, and feeling, and speaking, and acting with basically positive intentions, and never with self-serving reasons. Getchi Manitu, the creator, gave all creations gifts to share amongst each other. Getchi Manitu also reminds us that with those gifts come major responsibilities. And our first responsibility is that one of gratitude. Gratitude for all life-sustaining gifts Mother Earth provides for us. She is our greatest role model, one who unwaveringly demonstrates generosity and gratitude every single day without ever asking anything in return. We, as humans, have to learn from our older and wiser relatives. We need to be reminded on a regular basis that our very own existence lies in the gifts of others in the natural world. We must give thanks to all our relations, and by thanking each life-sustaining force, one becomes tied to each of the forces of the natural world. It teaches us that we have our own responsibilities, and that we also have to understand that what is done to one part of the web of life, it has repercussions on all life forms, including ourselves. When we apply this philosophy to our workplace, home, or self, we are actively taking care of the next seven generations, and we're doing that with love, generosity, and gratitude. So now, I would say that our minds are together as one, and have a wonderful day. Chi migwich.
Thank you, okay, sure. That was a first. We're grateful for the land that we share together. Thank you very much, Michelle Elise. Next order of business is the adoption of the meeting minutes from August the 26th. We've got Councillor LaCoco. No sound. You got, oh, you got to flip it on, on the top. Pull it forward, up. Yep, there you go.
Okay, here we go. It was on. I will move the minutes, but there's two amendments I would like to make. On 9.4, the commemorative Veterans Crosswalk, we talked about investigating lower-priced options, fundraising, and possible legal, Legion donation, if we can also add that to the minutes. And then the second one is under new business number 17, I asked about an update for the South Water, Water, Wastewater Treatment Plan. The $94 million is not for the South Niagara New Wastewater Treatment Plant. I just want to make that differentiation.
Mr. Clerk, any comment, or are we okay to move? Yep. Okay, we're good. Okay, so you'll make the motion with the amendments, seconded by Councillor Peter Angelo. There's no discussion. We'll call the vote. All those in favor, all right, that's approved unanimously. Thank you for that. Now, disclosures of a pecuniary interest, and for all of our guests here and the students, this is not our regular city council chambers. City Hall is going through renovations right now to make it more accessible. We have to make some IT updates and whatnot. So, we're here in the exchange. And for those of you that like pickleball, we have this great pickleball league that we run out of this facility. We've got Night of Art takes place in this facility, some really incredible things. This is your facility. So, temporarily, maybe for another month or so, we're going to be in this location. Normally, we wouldn't be. I'm sorry, cornhole, not pickleball. I'm sorry. Yeah, I know.
Whole new league started.
It's a whole new league, started right now. That why, that's why everyone's, they're texting me, wow, that's a new one. It's cornhole. So, anyway, I do want to move on and ask if we have any disclosures of a pecuniary interest, which means if they have a conflict on something. Councillor LaCoco.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a conflict on 9.3 PBD 2025-51. It's the Northwest Secondary Plan. I am a voting member of Club Italia.
Okay, thank you for that. Councillor Patel.
Mr. Mayor, I got a conflict with PBD 2025-51 Northwest Secondary Plan. I'm a voting member of the club, too.
Okay, thank you for that. Councillor Strange, and then Peter Angelo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. PBD 2025-50 Gardner West Secondary Plan, Preferred Concept Plan. My company I work for has two listings on that, on the secondary.
Okay. Councillor Peter Angelo.
Yeah, thanks, Your Worship. It's PBD 2025-51, the Northwest Secondary Plan Preferred Concept. I'm not a member of Club Italia, but I think my parents are. Pretty sure they are. I'll declare a conflict on that one. And bylaws 2025-110 and 2025-111, they're related to a previous decision of council. It was AM 2025-12, which I had a conflict on, as I own property that can be affected.
All right, thank you. Are there any other declarations of conflicts of interest? Okay, seeing none, and those will be put in writing and handed to our city clerk, who will then keep them on the city file. Next up, we'll quickly run through the mayor's reports and announcements, everybody's favorite part of the meeting. If you just ask me, first off, we've got some birthdays. Our city solicitor, Nitti, give a wave, Nitti, so everyone knows who you are. It's, her birthday was September the 11th. Kira, Kira, come on, give a wave, so everyone knows. This is our general manager of planning. Her birthday was September 17th. She, that is tomorrow. And now, Shelley Darlington, come on, Pinky, raise your, Pinky, everybody's birthdays. Hers is September the 23rd. And our city councillor, former city councillor, former mayor, Wayne Thompson, is Wednesday, September 24th. Our prayers are with Wayne. He's struggling with some health issues right now. Also, Dave Etherington, our Director of Information Services, shares Wayne Thompson's birthday of September the 24th. And Jason, to my left, to your right, our CAO, he is celebrating his birthday on September the 25th. And last, but not least, Kathy Moldenhauer, come on, give a wave, Kathy. That is our general manager of Recreation, Culture, and Facilities. Her birthday is September the 30th. So, it looks like we got a lot of important birthdays in September, so happy birthday to all of our senior staff. Now, events and announcements. Very exciting time for anyone that's been participating in the newest attraction in Canada, opened in Niagara Falls last week, right at the brink of the falls in Table Rock. It's called Niagara Takes Flight. It's a 4D simulated ride that gives you the simulation that you're a bird flying over the falls, through the mist, over the wineries, the golf courses, and through time. It is fantastic. And for the opening, I was joined by Councillor Strange, Patel, and Baldinelli, and I recommend everybody, get out and check it out. The opening narration is done by Niagara Falls resident, former resident, James Cameron. We tracked him down in New Zealand. He's making Avatar 3. He did the narration for the opening of it, and it is spectacular. It's gotten viral attention around the world, so make sure you get a chance you want to take it in. Niagara Takes Flight. Heaters Heroes, Councillor Strange's signature event that he's been running for 14 years now. Congratulations to you, Councillor Strange, on another successful event. I was grateful to be there with you, along with Councillors Baldinelli, Patel, and of course, yourself. 14 years running, helping support nine children this year, 160 children. 14 years running, helping support nine children this year, 160 children, with childhood-related cancer that you've helped in total. Is there anything you wanted to say about Heaters Heroes this year, Councillor Strange?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, yeah, I just want to thank everyone for coming out from our community. It was our 14th year, like you said, we've helped over 160 children in our region with either terminal illnesses or life-faltering illnesses or injuries, but we've gone as far as Ottawa to help children and their families when they're sick. This year, we had nine Heaters Heroes, and about 20 alumni heroes that came back, and it always encourages this year's Heaters Heroes when you see another one coming back and how well they're doing with maybe some type or similar illnesses that this year's Heaters are going through. We also have memory laps for some of our heroes who have passed away, like Julie Ann Misk, and their families come back and do a walk, and as well Jordi Pepperall, who's hit this community hard, obviously, when she passed away, actually, two years today. We also like to thank all the volunteers, the members and volunteers of the Falls View Hose Brigade, the Niagara Rock Academy, with, we had Reese, who was singing in the national anthem, that came out, our junior Cs, our junior As, Jeremy Elliott, our NHL greats, Marcel Dionne, Steve Ludzik, Larry Lannan, Don Lieber, Jimmy Bedard, our boxing phenoms, Lucas Body, Joshua Pio, Mike Apiscato, and everyone that came out, all the volunteers, I had some volunteers here from the city as well. So just thank everyone, and just keep doing, I can't wait for next year for the 15th years, hopefully we can do something special with a big band, so, thank you.
All right, well done, thanks so much. We also had our charity community barbecue last Sunday, raising money for our new hospital that we're building, and for the new hospice, which we're gonna be building next to the hospital. We're really grateful, we raised about $30,000 that day for those charities, want to thank all the volunteers, and I was joined by Councillors Dubrowski, Baldinelli, Patel, LaCoco, Carrio, Strange, and Nuisteg. We had several thousand people out this year, the weather was great, and the bees stayed away, which was really key. So thank you to everyone who helped make it a big success, third annual. Summer Trillium Awards took place at the Gale Centre last week. Councillor Peter Angelo was our emcee for the event, and we're grateful to the Environmental Action Committee for recognizing all those people that put extra effort into their yards, into their lawns, to make it more beautiful for everybody in the city. I was joined by Councillors LaCoco, Patel, and of course, Peter Angelo. Councillor Peter Angelo, is there anything you wanted to say about that event? All right, that was good, okay, pictures tell a thousand words, so thank you for that. We had your Dance Your Face Off fundraising event at Club Italia to support trigeminal neuralgia. These are people that have such pain in their face that they can't stand it, and something I didn't know existed, but it's great that we've got a local chapter that gathers to support each other. We just celebrated, for those that take it for granted, that we light the falls up every night with major LED bulbs. This is the 100th year of lighting up the falls, we just celebrated that, we had a special laser show on the gorge between the Canadian and American Falls, they had like a lightning thunderstorm with big sound cannons throughout the parks, and laser lightning on the wall of the gorge, it was pretty spectacular as we celebrated 100 years of lighting up the falls. Terry Fox Run took place this past Sunday, I was joined by Councillors LaCoco, Peter Angelo, Patel, and Nuisteg, as we had the biggest crowd on record participate, some good turnout, lot of fun, good exercise for an incredible cause. And Terry Fox did make a stop in Niagara Falls a long, long time ago, and his dream was to raise a dollar for every Canadian, and he's done much more than that, he's over a billion dollars that they've raised so far. And last, I'd like to thank city councillors for representing the city at different events that I couldn't be at. Councillor Strange and Baldinelli for representing the city at the puck drop at the Niagara Falls Canucks Home Opener, thank you to councillors for being there. To Councillor LaCoco for representing the city at the Carey Falls Event, thank you, Councillor LaCoco. Also, some business milestones in the community. We had the opening of pampered pups out on Sodom Road, their new location from Victoria Avenue. I was joined by Councillor Patel, she's on five acres now, where you'll be able to get your pup pampered, and you'll also be able to have boarding, they'll have boarding services there as well, so congratulations to Maria on a successful grand opening. We had the 10-year anniversary of Honey Pot Smoke Shop on Drummond Road, and I was joined by Councillor Nuisteg as we celebrated 10 years in business, a great milestone. We also had the grand opening of the new keg location at the Wyndham Grand Falls View, very deceiving location, because once you get in, it just goes on and on and on, it's huge, and there's lots of seats, hundreds of seats, and congratulations to the keg, to the Menachella family, and also to Councillors Patel, Nuisteg, and Peter Angelo for joining me that day at the grand opening. And the last grand opening, Samantha Quick Hair on McLeod Road, I was joined by Councillor Patel as we celebrate her grand opening, one more place to get your hair cut. And the last thing we do want to mention is flag raisings. We did have two, one for Childhood Cancer Awareness Month out front of City Hall, I was joined by Councillor Strange and Peter Angelo, and we had PKD Awareness Day, I was joined by Councillor Baldinelli that day, just as it was starting to rain. Our next city council meeting will apparently be back at City Hall, but we'll see, but tentatively is scheduled for Tuesday, October the 7th, back at City Hall, and that ends the mayor's announcements and remarks. And now we move on to what I think most of you are here for, is our civic recognition. So what I'm gonna do, we're gonna start off with the baseball players, and I'm gonna get a portable mic in a moment, and I'm gonna invite, let me start here, Dan Garofalo to join me, along with the assistant coaches, Eric Balden, Catherine Catherywood, Ryan Dionne, and John Surla, if you could kind of join me out front here, and I'm gonna grab a mic and I'll meet you there. Yeah, okay, one, two, one, two. So what I'd like to do here, okay, smile first, because, come on, guys, slide down this way a little bit, we don't want, John, you can't be in the back, you gotta be in the front row here. Yeah, I know, John, fellow Western grad. So the 11U AA Falcon Ontario Baseball Association recognition is taking place right here in front of City Hall, in city council, rather, and we're grateful. We like to celebrate all things that happen great by Niagara residents, and you young athletes are representing us well around the province, and this is our way of saying, well done, congratulations, and supporting you, to let you know, we recognize this. Anytime you do anything like this, you represent the city, and you made us proud, that's why we want you here, that's why city council wants you here. So I'd like to, I've welcomed up all the coaches already, and I'm gonna give a little write-up, I'm gonna read this real quickly, then I'm gonna pass the mic to the coach, the head coach, who's gonna invite you up one by one, and then we're gonna give you them these little pennants here, so I'm gonna need a little bit of help from the coaches here, because I have no idea exactly where I'm supposed to stand to do all this. You guys are gonna have to coach me here, where to stand, so we'll be on camera. And then what we'll do with each one of you, as you call your name, we're gonna give you your pendant, I'm gonna shake your hand, we're gonna do a pic, if mom, or dad, or brother, sister, whoever wants to take pictures, you can come right up and get as close as you want to get pictures, so don't worry about it, we'll take the time we need to make sure you get those pictures, these are your memories, and you worked hard, and I was glad to be there to see you guys kick it off, and we want to make, yes, all right. Yeah. Yeah, I'm, I'm pretty pathetic, aren't I? I'm pretty pathetic, anything for applause. So what a year for the 11U Falcon baseball team, they dominated the league play, and they finished the season with a 16-2 record, so much so that Vito Skorinji even came out today to recognize you guys. Yeah, we got the president here, and you know what, he, they came out with a hard-fought provincial championship, and I'm gonna ask our coach, Dan, to give us a story, so, Dan, maybe you can tell us and walk us through what happened, but what we want to know is, each one of you, we're all a part of this team, but the part we gotta make sure we acknowledge is your coaches, because they clearly don't do it for the money, and they work really hard, and sometimes, you know, maybe people get on them, because, you know, maybe a little Timmy or Jimmy should have played more, or whatever the case, and I know, I used to coach, I used to ump, I used to play, I know what it's like to be on all sides of the fence, but these guys, they're the true champs, because they're here through everything, and they just wanted to win, and it's not even about, it's about development, it's about your development as citizens in Niagara Falls. And this sport has nothing to do with sports, it's gonna be everything to do with what you do in your future careers, or when you raise your own families, and they want to make sure they act as mentors to you, and it just happened that you're also champs, so double whammy. So what do you say, I'm gonna pass the mic to Coach Dan, we're gonna ask him to invite up each player, one by one, we're gonna take pictures, and then once we do that, you're gonna stay up here till we do a group picture. Does that sound good? Okay. And how about now, I'm gonna, big hand for Coach Dan and all the assistant coaches.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. We really appreciate being recognized here today. Mr. Mayor, you were there, you were dressed like an umpire, but we knew you were rooting for us. So, yeah, for many of us with these boys, it's been a kind of a four-year journey to get here, winning this season. This year was all about challenging the boys, getting out of their comfort zone, putting us in situations, putting them in situations where they knew they could overcome the adversity of playing bigger centers, traveling further, and playing different teams. This season was a true test of adversity for the boys, and we're all very proud of how they overcame that, and how they were able to be the first team in over 13 years to win at home in Niagara Falls, so that's a great accomplishment for this group. But it was much more than just the players and the coaches, being able to win an OBA championship, or play an OBA championship at home is great, you save on hotels, you save on gas, but the real perk that we realized is having hundreds of people out to our games all weekend long, Labor Day weekend, seeing that many fans, that many people in the Falcons community, in the Niagara Falls community, supporting us was just incredible. Kerr Park was probably the loudest place in Niagara Falls that weekend, and it was very much appreciated by the boys, it helped kind of carry us and bring us through the weekend, 5-0, undefeated, and champions, so very proud. Just wanna say thank you to the GMBA, and especially Vito for supporting us, making sure that the boys always have what they need, as well as to the city for the fields and being able to allow us to practice and play as many games as we did this year. I think all in all, we were probably together on a ball diamond or in a school gym for about 400 hours between, starting in January through now, so it's been a very long journey this season, and the boys performed very well, but they also worked very hard, kind of became a great little family, and we're all very proud of it. Thank you. All right, I'll call up Jacob Rogers. Birthday boy, George Dionne. Charlie Herx. Cohen Goodman. Mason Surla. Mateo Brock. Mateo Vaca. Daniel Aine. Levi Catherywood. Henry Garofalo. Ben Kressman. Alex Balden.
So ladies and gentlemen, we're gonna do a team shot here, and then I'm gonna just have a few closing remarks. Pull in tight, guys, pull in tight. Hold on. So guys, ladies and gentlemen, and coaches, please grab your pendant as well, and if there's any players that aren't here today, or couldn't be here, grab one for them as well, and I am gonna have a few of these players back up in a minute, because we've got hockey awards and summer on both, getting recognized twice. The last group that I want to thank is the parents, the grandparents, the siblings, how about a big hand for all of the family? Because I'm talking to the families now, because if it wasn't for the fam, well, you know what it's like, everybody's working, you had to encourage them, get your homework done, or eat dinner, or get your rest, or put your Xbox away, or PS whatever away, and focus, or practice, whatever the case was, it's a team effort, it takes a village, and that's where we say, thank you for being great family members, great mentors, because of your influence, they're gonna be model citizens, and one day they'll be running the city. So big hand to all the families, yes? And a big hand for our championship team and coaches. And a big hand for our championship team and coaches. All right, not to be outdone or overshadowed, we're now going to recognize one of our great hockey teams that did an amazing thing as well. The Southern Tier Admiral U-11 Hockey Team. Yes, you can put your hands together. So I'd like to first welcome up the coaches. If I can get Team Coach Josh Ort along with assistants Matt Cathcartwood, Noah Demaree, Andrew Borjo and trainer Rene Royer. If I can get you up to come here, please. So I'm grateful that we've got two of our five coaches up here today. This hockey team had an amazing honor of winning the provincial championships for their age group, U-11, this past season in March. They won the OMHA championships in Kingston, Ontario with an outstanding record of five and O for the tournament. Coach Ort, if you'd please call up each of your athletes in front of us so that we can say a little something special, give them their pendant and do a picture as well. But maybe just before we do, maybe you can take us through what happened this season with this group of athletes.
Keep it close, okay. First, I want to say thank you Mayor Jim and all of your colleagues for acknowledging both these teams of young athletes today. It was, yeah, an amazing season. Also, I want to congratulate the coaches of the Falcons and the players for their amazing accomplishment once again. As we all know, time moves pretty quick and winning is not easy. And we, these kids, they worked hard every day and they bought into what we were teaching. Most importantly, they bought into one another and when you do those two things, amazing things can happen. And ironically enough, we also went five and O in our tournament, played our best hockey at the end of the year, put together, you know, quite a dominating performance, I'd say. And obviously the congratulation goes out to the kids. So it was a pretty amazing season and great job, boys. So and just before I introduce the boys, I want to thank my coaches. So Matt Cathcartwood just had to leave a few minutes ago, unfortunately. So he's not here. Noah Demaree, Andre Borjo, our trainer Rene Royer, our manager Nikki Westlake and the parent support across the board. As it was said earlier, and as we all know, none of this happens just by one person or one player. So thank you very much for that. Okay, so we're going to call up Christian Semes. Bryson Royer. Owen Westlake. Cole Turcot. Graham Matthews. Elijah Palachuk. Silas Hill. Jackson Good. Beckham Ort. Everett Persquini. Eli Cook. And now the boys who won the double, which was quite remarkable. Mason Surla. Mateo Brock. Mateo Vaca. And Levi Cathcartwood.
So ladies and gentlemen, what we'd like to do, so first of all, extra penance for the coaches who aren't here and for any players that weren't able to be here, if that's the case. And also, we did have four players that were on both championship teams, the baseball and the hockey. So we gave them just a little extra something to say, we appreciate. It's not easy being disciplined in two sports, but we're grateful that they're all here being recognized. So special hand for these champions and their coaches. So these guys are great, top of their game, triple A. We expect to be reading about them later on as they go on to do more wonderful athletic things and not just sports. We know you're going to do well with your school, with your jobs, with your businesses, whatever you guys do. Because they had great mentoring from their coaches. They had great examples from their families. And it's the little thing the city can do is recognize these kids. Because you know, when a kid, someone does something wrong, everybody's quick to say it. We got to be just as quick to catch them doing something right and acknowledge it. So on behalf of the city of Niagara Falls, we're very proud of all these athletes. We're proud of their coaches, their mentors and all their families. You're doing a great job, folks. Thank you very much. Have a great night.
Thank you. You look like the Benny Hill Show. Your feet were poking out there. I had so many jokes come to mind, I thought none of them were a good idea. You tell me when you think it's quiet enough or...
All right. Make sure those people get locked in the room. They have to stay for the rest of the meeting if they haven't left yet. Kidding. All right, I would now ask our city clerk if he'd please introduce the next item on the agenda.
A public meeting is now being convened to consider a proposed amendment to the city's official plan and zoning bylaw to permit the construction of three on-street townhouse dwellings at 5981 and 5969 Dunn Street. Notice was given by first-class mail in accordance with the Planning Act on August 15, 2025 and by posting a sign on the property in question. In accordance with Bill 185, the minister, the applicant or a specified person, public body or registered owner of any land to which the official plan amendment and zoning bylaw will apply, who made oral submissions at a public meeting or written submissions to city council prior to the adoption of the official plan amendment and/or passage of the bylaw, may appeal the official plan amendment and/or the bylaw to the Ontario Land Tribunal. Third-party appeals are no longer permitted.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Now call on Chris Room, Planner 2, to provide an overview of this report. Oh, I think our microphone, is that microphone on? And you got to bring it right up to your little higher as well.
Yeah, let's see if that does. Is that any better?
A little better, yeah, a little better, yeah.
Let's try that. I just want to make sure I can get the slideshow to cooperate first as well. No underwear, sorry? Not sure I can really see where I am. Gotcha, okay. Thank you very much. Make sure we're good there, okay, all right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, council staff and area residents. And thank you for joining the public meeting for official plan amendment and zoning bylaw amendment, file number AM 2025-007 for the properties at 5981 and 5969 Dunn Street, submitted by the owners, Mary Ann and Keith Callahan, who are represented by NPG Planning Solutions. The proposal is to amend the official plan and zoning bylaw to permit the construction of three on-street townhouse dwellings. Subject lands are comprised of two parcels located on the north side of Dunn Street and on the east side of Orchard Avenue. The surrounding uses consist of detached dwellings to the north and some to the south. Townhouse dwellings to the west and to the south as well and a detached dwelling and an office used to the east. This site is serviced by Transit Line 101 with a bus stop located directly in front of the subject lands. As I previously mentioned, the application seeks amendments to the official plan and zoning bylaw to redesignate and rezone the subject lands to allow for the construction of one three-story townhouse block that contains three on-street townhouse dwelling units fronting onto Orchard Avenue. For clarity regarding the processing of this application, staff acknowledged that the initial assessment provided to the applicant was incorrect. Originally, an OPA seemed unnecessary for the proposal. However, after further review, it was determined that it would be required. The Planning Act requires open houses for official plan amendments and staff are satisfied that this requirement has been met and fulfilled by the July 15 open house, even though an OPA was not identified at that time. Proper notice, including the identification of the official plan amendment, was provided for this public meeting on August 15 through first-class mail and signs were posted on the subject lands on the same day. The subject lands are designated residential in accordance with the official plan and are located within the Dunn Street Intensification Corridor. The application proposes to redesignate both properties to a special policy residential area to permit an increase in density of 45.9 units per hectare, where 20 to 40 units per hectare is permitted in the residential designation. It should be noted that the special policy area will only apply to the lot containing the townhouse units. In accordance with zoning bylaw 79200, the lands are zoned residential low-density grouped multiple dwelling zone, or the R4 zone for short. And the applicant is proposing to rezone the lands to a site-specific R4 zone with the following provisions: That on-street townhouses and the existing detached dwellings on Dunn Street are permitted. A minimum lot area of 215 square meters for each townhouse dwelling. A minimum lot frontage of 23 meters for the townhouse block and 6 meters for each townhouse unit. A minimum rear yard depth of 7 meters. An interior side yard width of 2.5 meters. A maximum lot coverage of 45%. Maximum height of 11.2 meters. A minimum privacy yard depth of 7 meters and provisions to recognize the existing deficiencies for the detached dwellings being accessory building side yards of 0.9 and 0.4 meters and a minimum lot frontage of 15 and 13 meters respectively for 5981 and 5969 Dunn Street. A public open house was held on July 15, 2025 and it was attended by the applicant staff and the agent for the applicant and no members of the public were in attendance. Since the publishing of this presentation, staff did receive one written correspondence from a member of the public who was not in support of the increase in density. Staff's response to this correspondence is that the increase is considered minor and represents a gentle transition in density where the Dunn Street Intensification Corridor permits a minimum of 50 units per hectare and the applicant is requesting 45.9 units per hectare. Additionally, while this proposal doesn't contemplate any additional dwelling units, they are permitted as of right and do not count towards the density requirement. This means that an alternative development proposal could have considered ADUs, which could have resulted in more than three total units, provided they met the requirements of the zoning bylaw without the need for an official plan amendment. The proposed development conforms with the provincial, regional and city policies as it is transit supportive and supports the achievement of a complete community. It will assist the city in meeting its intensification targets, provides a gentle transition in density towards the intensification corridor and will provide additional housing choices for residents. Proposal will minimize urban land consumption and efficiently use underutilized land and is serviced by existing municipal services with no traffic or transportation impact expected. And the introduction of multiple, additional multiple dwellings will contribute to the diversification of housing supply within the urban area as prescribed by the 2024 provincial planning statement as well as the regional and city official plans. Staff recommend that council approve the official plan and zoning bylaw amendments to redesignate the lands to a special policy area of the residential designation to permit an increased density and rezone the lands to a site-specific residential, residential low-density grouped multiple dwelling zone to facilitate the construction of the three on-street townhouse dwellings. And that concludes the presentation for this application.
Thanks very much. Any questions for Mr. Room? Yes, Counsel LaCoco?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through the mayor to Mr. Room, I had a couple of questions. There's the three-year sunset clause with a one-year extension. Can you hear, oh, sorry there, can you hear me? So, yeah, it's something we'll look at as part of our official plan review in terms of accessory dwelling units, but I'm, you know, again, we'll consider it. I'm hesitant only because, again, it's something accessory, it's not something that's mandatory or required, it's something that's added on to. So, but we will, we will give some thought to that as we.
Great, thank you. And the last question is about parking. The report said the onsite parking in front of each unit. I didn't see a drawing, is that one parking space and the garage? What if there's ADUs, they can't build them if they don't have parking? How does that work?
Yeah, through the mayor, the requirement for ADUs is to provide an additional onsite parking space. They do have a parking space in the garage and is one in the driveway as well. So, you know, in theory, if they wanted to add an ADU, their parking provision would be met, however, there's a lot of other complications that they would run into if they did want to add an ADU. Primarily, the floor plans don't really show any available room for it, there's no basements proposed, so there's a lot of other complications that come about if they were to consider it at this point. Certainly accessory structures would be quite a challenge as well, there's just not a lot of space in the rear yard, lack of green space, landscaped area, it would all get triggered. I would certainly need another Planning Act application through a minor variance, but essentially, yes, the parking would technically be met in that scenario.
Okay, thank you, those are all my questions.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions of council? Okay, thank you for that. Members of the public are advised that failure to make an oral or written submission at this public meeting could result in the Ontario Land Tribunal dismissing any referral that it receives. Council will hear from anyone other than the applicant who wishes to speak to the proposed amendments. Mr. Clerk, do we have anybody registered to speak?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, there is one resident, Mr. Burdette.
Okay. Mr. Burdette, if you'd like to come to the microphone and state your address, and you'll have up to five minutes to address council.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we do.
My name is Jody Burdette, and I live at 4480 Bridge Street. Just want to start off first by saying I appreciate you mentioning the five-minute time limit. I have participated in more council meetings than four city councillors this term, and I will be speaking again later today, I assure you. I am aware of the rule, and you do not need to repeat it each time I speak. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and members of council. I want to briefly address this application. After reviewing the report, I believe it is clear that the application meets the requirements set out in the Planning Act, the official plan, and the applicable municipal bylaws. Efficiency and certainty are important principles. Approving applications that satisfy the legislative framework gives certainty to both residents and applicants. It demonstrates that the council respects and upholds the laws and bylaws that govern its decisions, rather than relying on informal interpretations. This avoids unnecessary delays or costs and builds public confidence. Community impact is also worth noting. No significant adverse impacts have been identified. Where technical requirements exist, they will be addressed through conditions of approval and site plan control. That's the proper mechanism, and it ensures protections are in place for residents while still allowing responsible development. Consistency is equally critical. When council applies legislation and bylaws evenly, it reinforces fairness, transparency, and predictability. Residents and applicants alike can trust that decisions are grounded in the governing legal framework. From my perspective, this application aligns with the established legislative direction and the municipality's own planning framework. On that basis, I believe council would be justified in supporting staff's recommendations. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Am I dismissed?
Uh, you, if you're done, you are, you're good. Thank you for being under the five minutes. All right. Mr. Clerk, I'm sorry, is there anyone else other than the applicant who wishes to address council? Okay, seeing none, council will now hear from the applicant or his or her representative.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of council. That's awfully convenient, because I was going to say I think I might forego the presentation since Chris did a great time, so maybe next time I should throw it a bit farther. To that point, happy to answer any questions about the application if any members of council have any.
Okay, great. Are there any questions of council for the applicant's representative? Okay, seeing none, I think we're in good shape, we've got our questions answered. You did a great presentation.
Thank you. Probably quickest yet.
We liked that throwing the most part, that was good. So let me first close the public meeting with respect to the proposed official plan and zoning bylaw amendment is now concluded. The proposal, application is moved by Counsel Cariot, seconded by Counsel Nuestag. Any discussions to the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Okay, and that's unanimous. Thank you for that, council, and thank you. Excellent presentation. It was very brief, we liked those guy. Next order of business, if I could, council, if you'd indulge me, our CAO has requested that we move item 9.6 forward to be dealt with now. That is our finance report, because we do have auditors in the audience, and with a motion, we can move that one forward right now. Motion by Counsel Strange, seconded by Counsel Peter Angelo, all those in favor? Okay, and that's approved. So we'll go to 9.6 for the consolidated financial statements, and are we going to have, I'm going to ask Ms. Clerk to maybe introduce the report, and then we'll go from there.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The report on the agenda today just has the 2023 financial statements, and we're just looking, frankly, for council to approve those statements. If there are any questions, I do have Paul Chapano from KPMG in the audience there, and he can field any technical questions. In addition, attachment to is the audit finding report from KPMG.
All right. Do we have any questions of council? Counsel LaCoco?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A couple of quick questions. On page 29, it talks about contingent liabilities, about legal outstanding claims. I know we've talked about council receiving an update about legal claims, and I was wondering when and if we're doing that, because I haven't seen a report.
Ms. Piñati, did you want to, no?
Or Tiffany.
Or Tiffany, I'm sorry. Mr. CEO, who should answer this question? Nobody's jumping forward.
We can certainly look into providing a report of that nature.
In the meantime, our CAO is going to jump in, will they?
Yeah, the auditor does an independent review of potential legal claims and makes his or her assessment based upon that, but we can bring in-camera status of any outstanding claims to council. So we'll take that as direction, and there'll probably be a couple of cycles.
Thank you very much. It's a lot of money, it's $43 million on the report, so that's why I was asking, and I did bring it up before. On page 38, it talks about the International Railway Bridge. I was wondering, I don't know if this needs to go on camera, not now, but at another point, can we have an update on that international bridge? Because we have a reserve set for $4 million, and we have to reimburse CNN if it's demolished, and.
Yeah, we, the disclosure in the financial statement is pretty accurate, there's not a lot of other information, but we can go in camera because of some other potential real estate transactions, so that we can bring an update later, but the disclosure is pretty good.
I'll just add, the reserve's actually 7.6 million at this point. It started at $4 million, and it's been increased with interest.
6.7, you said?
7.6.
7.6, sorry. Thank you. I was just bringing it up because it goes to December 2026, and I was wondering if we can get an update on that. That's great, thank you. And then, I just want to confirm that I'm reading this right, on page 44, the transit, it says that we transferred $28 million to Negro Regional Transit of our assets, is that correct?
Yeah, there was a transfer there related to future employee liability and other liabilities that were there, so we had to cover off the asset as part of the amalgamation.
Okay, thank you. And then, on page 60, it talks about risk assessments. Are these common risk assessments to all municipalities or just the city? Or our city?
I'll have the auditor address that question specifically.
Hi, Counselor. Can everyone hear me? Through the mayor, through the mayor, those risks are, if I remember correctly, it goes through base, significant, elevated. That's our KPMG's methodology in terms of how we rate those specific asset classes. So at the beginning of the audit, we'll go through a risk assessment on the financial statements and do our own independent assessment of where we think the risk areas are. That being said, though, those are standard with our municipalities, they're not specific to the city in itself.
Great, thank you, that's all.
Thank you. Any other questions of council? Okay, seeing none, there's a recommendation that we received for, or I'm sorry. What is the recommendation, Mr. Clerk? That we approve the 2023 financial statements. Motion by Counselor DeBroski, seconded by Counsel Strange. Any discussion to that? Call the vote, all those in favor? Okay, thank you for that, and thank you to our auditors for being here. Lucky you, you got to hear the mayor's announcements, lucky you.
As an auditor, you should stay and watch the whole council so you get a better feel of what's going on.
Ah, good idea. I'm sure he wants to, anyway. Okay, moving along to item.
Now he's going to feel guilty, watch, he's going to stay there.
Yeah, you're going to learn how he knows the moonwalk, he's going to step out without us even realizing. 9.1, 2025 Customer Service Standards Policy, there's a recommendation for information of council. Do we have any comments or questions of council? And if not, how about a motion? Counsel Peter Angelo?
We have one speaker.
Oh, I'm sorry, we do have a speaker, we do have a speaker. Sorry, folks. Mr. Clerk, who would that speaker be?
Yes, we do have one delegation request from Mr. Burdette.
All right, Mr. Burdette, if you want to come forward, and once again, we ask that you state your address, and once again, I need to procedurally remind you that it's up to five minutes.
My name is Jody Burdette, I live at 4480 Bridge Street. Mayor, members of council, this policy sets expectations for how staff will interact with residents and helps ensure a culture of professionalism and respect. Those goals are important, and I believe everyone values courtesy, timely, and fair service. However, it is equally important to recognize the proper place of such a policy within the city's governance framework. It is not my place to make city policy, but I do like to review what staff create from time to time. The procedural bylaw establishes a statutory 24-hour deadline for submitting requests to delegate. This is the binding rule. By contrast, the Customer Service Standards Policy sets only a target of two business days for staff to respond to resident emails. If staff rely on the policy instead of the bylaw, the result is that a resident who properly files within the 24-hour statutory deadline could still be shut out of council simply because staff do not rely until af, sorry, reply until after the meeting has passed. That frustrates the bylaw and undermines residents' rights of access. Further, the policy itself makes clear that it is not legally enforceable. Residents have no legal remedy against staff under this policy. That is appropriate, because policies are intended as guidelines, not binding legal documents. This is a good example of municipal jurisprudence. When policies and legal documents conflict, it is the legislation and the bylaws that must take precedence. My submission is straightforward. Council should ensure that the Customer Service Standards Policy is understood as advisory only and never as a substitute for the requirements of the procedural bylaw. Council should instruct staff that where there is a conflict between a service policy and a council bylaw, the bylaw prevails. This is not a minor technicality. It goes to the heart of fair and equal access to council. Policies cannot be used to filter who may or may not be heard, particularly when those policies provide no legal recourse for residents. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Guys, my mic turned out? Maybe up a little bit. All right, thank you very much for that. So we got to vote on this now. Did we, remind me, Mr. Clerk, we've already got a motion and a second?
We do not yet.
Pardon me?
Not yet.
We do not. Okay, motion by Counsel Peter Angelo, seconded by Counsel Cariot. We'll call the vote, all those in favor? Okay, and that's unanimous, thank you for that. 9.2, Garner West Secondary Plan Preferred Concept. Did Ms. Dolch, or, okay, we've got someone who's going to present on this?
Mr. Dolch could.
Yeah, Ms. Dolch, maybe you could introduce, or presenter?
Thank you, worship, I apologize for that.
No problem.
Mr. Miller will be, will give our presentation on the Garner West Secondary Plan.
Excellent.
Good evening, I hope you can hear me?
Yep, perfect.
Good afternoon, I'm not quite sure what time it is at the moment, so, yeah, thank you for allowing me to present. What I'm going to do is run through a presentation on the Garner West Secondary Plan in support of the report that will follow. So, just to start it off here, checking this, here we go, we'll move that over. Okay, so a little bit of background here, I didn't realize these were animated, so. The Garner West Secondary Plan was initiated in July of '23. The Phase 1 work was undertaken where we were, I guess, out there getting all of our benchmarks, getting all of our what's-out-there-today facts in the existing condition side of things, which of course was completed, and we brought a report forward on that to council, who then directed us to move forward into the Phase 2, which I'll refer to as the options development side of our work. So, we are, or I'm here today to discuss or to go over with you, and the report discusses the options process, and there is a preferred concept available that we'd be looking for council to endorse. So, just wanted to make sure that everybody understood it is still a concept, you know, it is a preferred arrangement of the fundamental and foundational components that staff would work towards as we enter that third and final phase, and it is subject to change, because some of those details may be, you know, modified or altered as we get through these more detailed studies. For example, one of the roads that might be showing on this preferred concept, the professionals might say, you know what, you might want to move that 50 meters up or down or something like that. So what you're looking at is not a land use plan that were representative of the amendment that will go forward at a later date. So I'll just move on here. Okay, so a little bit of background here. I didn't realize these were animated, so. The Garner West Secondary Plan was initiated in July of twenty-three. The Phase One work was undertaken where we were, I guess, out there getting all of our benchmarks, getting all of our what's-out-there-today facts and the existing condition side of things, which of course was completed, and we brought a report forward on that to counsel, who then directed us to move forward into the Phase Two, which I'll refer to as the options development side of our work. So we are, or I'm here today to discuss or to go over with you, and the report discusses the options process, and there is a preferred concept available that we'd be looking for counsel to endorse. So, just wanted to make sure that everybody understood it is still a concept. You know, it is a preferred arrangement of the fundamental and foundational components that staff would work towards as we enter that third and final phase, and it is subject to change because some of those details may be, you know, modified or altered as we get through these more detailed studies. For example, one of the roads that might be showing on this preferred concept, the professionals might say, you know what, you might want to move that fifty, fifty meters up or down or something like that. So what you're looking at is not a land use plan that were representative of the amendment that will go forward at a later date. So I'll just move on here. So this, and quickly, and throughout this whole second phase of our work, we had a lot of consultation with agencies, authorities, landowners, anybody who was interested, we targeted, and the method or the methodology of developing concepts and trying to percolate and come out with something that was, that we could take forward to the public and gather additional input. So we did have two options developed for each of the plans I'll be discussing today, but for the Garner West Plan, the Option One Plan, as you see here, obviously a very busy plan. I think what my intent here with this, when I put this together, was more of a placemat type of thing. You go to the diner or breakfast diner, you have your breakfast placemat, you get a lot of information there while you're waiting. So this was the attempt here, and a lot of visualization, too, so that people could understand, you know, what they may see or example of what might, they might find in a situation, you know, related to the colors that might be on the plan. So that was the attempt, so we did that, taking away all of the noise that is around that plan. I would suggest to you that, you know, there's a lot of key pieces here, and I think counsel, one of the ways we might want to convey this message is that we're looking at the skeleton of, you know, the urban structure here and some of the vital organs. So what you'll see here is, you know, the gateway, I have a gateway road running in off of Lundys Lane, running south into a very strong road grid. A grid is a very efficient and effective way for development to occur, the lot parceling fabric, everything is very up and down straight. There's not a lot of lost space through curvilinear work. So the higher densities you'll also find along Lundys Lane, a corridor, and McLeod Road to the south end. And in this, in this option here, I have more of the medium density, I'll call that, focused on that main road coming in from Lundys Lane, moving south. It's all situated around Neighborhood Park and potential school sites. And the lower densities I have situated along Garner Road and Beechwood. So we have existing community to the east, of course, and then so I have a lower-density interface with that so that we have more of a balanced streetscape for Garner Road, but we've, I've also had a reduced approach to Beechwood. We would like to see all the forward-facing units onto the arterial roads. I think it's been a common practice for us more recently to make sure that we're not turning our backs to our arterial roads, the aesthetic have eyes on those roads. The neighborhood parks and the schools are central in the north and south portions of this, where you will, you know, I'm using the Hydro Corridor as a dividing line for the north and south and anything I'm sort of discussing there. This particular option is using minimal environmental constraints. You'll note that, for example, the existing drainage course that cuts through the Niagara Falls Golf Club is proposed to be realigned along the northern edge and brought down to its exit point there. That's not done in isolation. We've had discussions with MPCA. They remain open to this as an option, provided that the study work is done, permits are obtained. You know, you can, you can make that modification if that's something that ends up being, I'm gonna say feasible for that landowner, but from a urban structure perspective, it really does allow us to get more, you know, tight grid road networks without obscure angles of constraint running through. And of course, the stormwater management is represented in the lower-lying areas, which is, of course, on the south central there, opposing the McLeod Meadows. There's a drainage course at the Thompson that runs south there. And then we have the Shriners Creek, running east, Beaver Dams, running to the, to the west, I'm sorry, at a number of exit points along the western edge of this community. This particular option, there's benefits, but I think I'll wait till I get to the preferred and we can discuss those, so I'll just move on. Sorry about that, I didn't realize this was happening. Okay, so Option Two is another approach, same approach with the plan itself, to illustrate, provide as much information, discussion on the information provided on the plan. You take away the noise on that, and then you see the land use structure there that I'm working on. So it does have a gateway entry, again, still off Lundys Lane, serving to, you know, the Collector Road into the community. It's, this particular option is making use of some curvilinear approach to the Collector Road networks. It's introducing some traffic circles, and although there's often radiating local roads from the collectors, there is also opportunities for a little bit of gridwork there in the southwest portions of the plan. The higher densities, again, remain, and I think that'll always be the case in this work, is on Lundys Lane and McLeod, which are corridor areas. Medium densities in this plan are a little bit more dispersed. Now, they're not quite as focused on that individual north-south collector as in the first option. Again, we have parks and schools centrally located north and south of the Hydro Corridor. And in this instance here, you can see that I've retained the drainage course through the golf course lands. There's also additional environmental showing on this that may or may not remain. At the end of the day, we'll wait for the balance of the sub watershed work and the environmental work. And stormwater management, again, is situated in similar locations. I think, just quickly, on the difference between one and two there, whether you noted or not, but there's more storm detention facilities when you have a drainage course that cuts through, you have to put one on either side. So the first plan that was there, the option, the first option had three ponds. This particular option here, you're looking at six. So, just moving along. So we're at the preferred concept, and so we took those two options to the public. August sixth, we had an open house at the McBain. Well, attended, I think there was probably about fifty or sixty people in attendance, so it was lots of discussion, lots of input. We had our consultants on hand to answer questions from the public, and comments were submitted and received. We've considered a lot of that. We've considered everything that we've received from our discussions with agencies and authorities, property owners, community focus group, and arriving at what I'm calling here as the preferred concept. So, again, just a reminder that there will be some tweaks that you can expect to occur as we get into this final phase. But in this particular concept, I'm retaining the realigned water course. That particular landowner is going through an exercise of, like, a cost benefit. You know, they're, you know, they're the ones who are really, at the end of the day, are going to, you know, be the ones that, is it worth their while to have us, you know, suggest this or not? So this landowner will advise in the meantime. You know, I'm maintaining that because I think it would serve us better in the long run for this particular community plan. It does continue to maintain the densities north along Lundys Lane and on the south, McLeod Road. The medium densities, again, are similar to the first plan where they're more focused on that primary Collector Road running north-south. Again, we'll be maintaining the expectation to have lower densities at our boundary roads to the east and west of Garner and Beechwood there, so that we interface with the agricultural and existing communities in a more balanced approach. Again, this maintains centrally located parks and schools on the north and south, incorporates potential environmental drainage features. As I was mentioning, we're gonna put them in here until such time that our sub watershed work is complete. And it, of course, maintains the stormwater management facilities all in the general locations. And one of the things that you would note about this plan is there's less colors on this plan. There's been more consolidation. You know, the previous options had maybe a dozen different colors representing different things. This has now been more simplified, so there's a lot less color, but, you know, we can still, through policy and through zoning, you know, make sure that we're trying to achieve the goals and the objectives of this plan. So that's, that's been simplified, but it also really addresses some of the, some of the concerns that the development community have been expressing with us, and that's not to be so rigid. They want that flexibility, so we're trying to, you know, work with that and see how we may accommodate those kinds of things, while still making sure that those vital organs are in this plan, they're shown in this plan, they're located in this plan where it's most advantageous for this future community. So that's, that's what you're seeing with the, with this particular plan. The different colors there, the yellow, the orange, and the purple, basically are, you know, low, medium, and a mixed juice. Our low range is, you know, up to twenty-five units per hectare. The medium range would be between twenty-five and seventy-five, and the range for the mixed juice, seventy-five to a hundred and maybe up to a hundred-and-twenty-five for the gateway locations. So that might be the corner of McLeod, I mean, that might be the corner of Garner and Lundys Lane, or it may be the corner of Garner and McLeod, somewhere along there for just slightly more. But generally, the intensification of those corridors is a location that these particular plans are focusing in. So let me just, I think there's one more slide here. So the yields. Okay, so if you're looking at unit count, we're somewhere between, because we're introducing the range of density to help, again, with our development community, give them some choice in responding to market and whatnot, and less need for perhaps some OPA amendments. You know, the range of unit count is somewhere between thirty-one and forty-seven-hundred units. That would represent a population of between eight thousand people to eleven thousand seven-hundred-and-fifty people. The average, if I took the averages of those yields and populations, they're listed there of about thirty-nine-hundred units and about ninety-eight-seventy-five people, which works out to be roughly about two-point-five persons per unit. And those particular numbers are very close to the numbers we've been using for our growth work, you know, moving forward for TMP, MSP, all that, those types of major master planning, so it's close to those numbers. Just one more slide here, I believe, and then, yeah, just a brief on our phase of work. We completed that phase, Phase One work, reported to counsel in March. Since March, we've been moving through the Phase Two, the options development, and we're now at the end of that stage, and we're looking for an endorsement on the land use plan so that we have a piece that we can take to our consulting team and say, okay, here's where we're gonna start with this, just a single document. But the things that we want are represented in that plan, our Collector Road networks, our schools, our parks, things of that nature. So I think I'll just conclude there and take any questions counsel may have.
All right, that, okay, thanks very much, Mr. Miller. Questions of counsel? So I've got Counselor DeCoco, Nuustag, and Carrio.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just one question, and then I have comments later. I just want to confirm, there's three options on this presentation, Option One, Option Two, and Preferred Option, because I've had a couple residents contact me and say that they saw Option Two was the preferred option, but when I look at the colors and the blocks of it, it doesn't look like it's Option Two. Can we please clarify that?
Through you, Mayor, through the counselor, okay, thank you for that. I can, I can, I believe I understand how that might happen. So we only took two options to the public on this, but we also had our consulting team provide, you know, some opinion on that. Those reports are also available on the Let's Talk pages, where people are saying, well, I like Option One's use of the road network, or we prefer Option Two's, you know, this or that. So that may be where that misunderstanding might be coming, but the reality is, is that I've taken everything I've heard, and I've distilled this into one plan, and that's the plan I'm seeking counsel's endorsement on so that I can move into Phase Three and we can start being more, you know, focused in on the policy we want, you know, potential zoning we want. So that's where we want to take it, but that's where I believe the confusion may lie.
Okay, thank you. So there are technically three options here, and the third option is your preferred option?
Yeah, and it is really, it basically is a hybrid. You'll see that there's a lot of similarities where I've taken stuff, people, I prefer this, I prefer that, you know.
Okay, thank you. I'll have some comments later. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Nuustag.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to focus in on the focus group and your approach with the residents and the homeowners. So I always believe that nobody knows their backyard as best as the homeowner. So I understand you went to the, like, as many homeowners are in that area, property owners?
No, the property owner, through the mayor, to the counselor, the property owners referring to are the property owners who were within that plan area.
Yeah, yes.
Yeah, so those are the property owners that, you know, I've, from the beginning of the process, have reached out to let them know, hey, we're gonna be going through this process, and we're gonna be wanting to do this and do study work on your property and things of that nature. So I've had rapport and have contact information for all of the property owners in the secondary plan area, so is there more to that?
Yeah, I was just asking the percentage. So you met with, so everyone affected has been consulted and had their voice heard on this?
In the secondary plan area, some people did not respond, some people did not want to get involved, not everybody. When I would approach them and ask them, I have most people well-engaged, a few people have just stepped back.
But the city has approached everyone, so it's not...
I have, yes. I sent them letters from day one.
That's wonderful.
You know, we are starting this process, please give me all your contact information, you know, and also if you'd like to become involved in this, please let me know, we'll set up meetings and all that, so. Not everybody has.
So, and obviously, you've come to this, these recommendations based on more or less consensus. Was there any property owner that voiced very loud concern that just was outside of the consensus area?
Um...
Or was everybody in...
These are, so far, this is, I'm using my professional opinions to generate this plan. I'm using, you know, the advice of the professional consulting teams that are involved with this with me. You know, we listen to everybody, you know, we're not being directed in any way. It really comes down to, you know, what you're looking at here is me saying, this is, this is the community I would like to put forward and work towards. So, you know, it's not, I hear everybody. We try to, you know, accommodate things where we can. Some things are just not feasible to be, you know, suggesting in the type of community that we're looking at or what have you. So it's a matter of me filtering out what I'm hearing and just distilling it into this plan, everything that I've known and everything that I've heard.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Okay, Counselor Carrio.
My comments were similar to, my questions, similar to Counselor Nuustag. Mayor, they were answered. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for your brevity. I'm gonna go to Counselor Baldenelli, and then Patel.
Thank you for that presentation. I'm just gonna ask you, I'm not a planner, so I'm gonna ask you some questions here. From Lundys Lane to McLeod Road in this preferred land use, is it almost like, you know, Lundys Lane to Thorold Stone? How many?
Similar. In this particular case here, I'm gonna guess it may be two kilometers in length, north-south, and a kilometer-wide kind of thing.
Well, the reason I'm asking is east to west, you know, throughways, you know, you're gonna drive from Lundys Lane all the way to McLeod Road to get to Beechwood. I'm just wondering why there isn't consideration of having, you know, between the corridors, having a throughway on one side and a throughway on the other side of these two to get from east to west?
I see, so...
Just, 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 just off the top of my head. And number two is, I'm not a planner. I'm not understanding why we have your medium density surrounded by low density, having your high density or your high, mixed-use high at the corners or outside edges, which is normal, and then medium inside surrounded by single. Wouldn't you think that it would be outside and then inside if, you know, I'm just asking these questions, because I'm not understanding why you would put a high population that would have to drive through a low-density area? Just a lot, creates a lot of traffic with kids and stuff like that, especially around the schools. Just those two questions.
Okay. Through you, Mayor, through the counselor, thank you for the questions. I think what you're referring to is the mid-block, the connecting roads through the mid-blocks, where you might see Forest View going from one, from Garner over to Kayler, right? That type of a situation, you know, so that they don't have to go to, you know, Lundys Lane to get to Garner or whatever, they can use, drive through the community on a Collector Road. So I'm gonna take that as that understanding. So, you know, we are trying to align to the Collector Roads that go through from the community to the east, so, you know, Forest View in this preferred concept is going through. And it's also been suggested that McGary be a road that go through as well, there's also a Collector Road that runs through. So we are carrying those roads through. They're just not running right over to Beechwood because there's environmental interference or, you know, things of that nature where we have to stop or move the location of the road. The thing with the grid in this, the Collector Road, is that there'll be stop control at these intersections. It's not as though we want to create or allow for fast-moving situations through the neighborhood areas. So I'm suggesting that the grid is a good way to approach that, and it's all more or less. The only one that, in this particular plan that would go right through is the McGary one. The other ones are all stop-controlled, and then there'd be a turn. The land use distribution, in this, in this instance here, the medium density towards the center of this plan on this, on this... the center of this plan on this, on this particular concept is, you know, close to the parks. It's close to the school. You're going to have a majority of population also using those, so it's convenient, extremely convenient for them. You know, so it's also right on the roadways, the collector roadways running north-south. So, I don't necessarily see that as, as being something that's a detriment to the community structure. I think I understand what you're trying to get at in the long, you know, the way we used to do things, you know, is, is keeping everybody kind of out to the edges and then, you know, having the low density, really expensive homes towards the middle here, but I am also having that density, you know, along Lundys Lane and McLeod Road, which are really, you know, very much intensification corridors. So, I'm hoping that helps in suggesting, but, or answering the question.
Well, the collector roads trouble me because you're going through, and then you, you have to stop, and then make a turn, and then make a stop, and make a turn, and that's where your volume of traffic's going to be. I think I'd be better off if you just went straight through, in my opinion, sort of like by Betty's when you have the collector road going from one side towards a golf course with some speed bumps, you know, to make sure that people are slowing down, neighborhood watch, that type of thing. When you start having turns, you have backup traffic, and people are going to be taking those shortcuts through the, through the neighborhood, so.
Through the mayor, to the councilor.
That's just my opinion.
Yeah, through the mayor, to the councilor. I understand where you're coming from, but at the same time, having grid, no, road networks is, they're highly, highly permissible, gives you lots of options. You can go this way, that way, you know, and that's the same thing for pedestrians, giving them lots of options, "I can go this way or that way." So, you know, the perception that there'll be traffic issues, I do think that in the Phase Three reporting, we'll see that your, you know, get some of your questions answered. I'll put that, you know, note that, I've made a note of that, and I'll discuss that with the traffic consultants and say, you know, "This is something I heard." So, what, what would you have to say about that? All right.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Patel.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. When you say low-density housing, are we looking at the detached housing?
Sorry, detached?
Yeah, what is the low-density housing?
In this, in this day and age, the low-density housing is going to be things like detached, semi-detached, townhouse, triplex, quad. Those are the, the built form that would, you would find in the yellow that's been in those plan areas. So, there'll be direction through policy to have a mix, so we're not looking at the same thing constantly. We need choice in those communities, price points in those communities for, for everybody. So, really, that's what it is. So, that's the type of form that you should expect in those yellow areas, and, you know, through our policy and zoning, we'll work towards better defining.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So, do you have a number in mind, or do you know that certain percentage of number of the low-density housing will be detached housing or semi-detached?
When I'm doing this kind of process, yes, I'm going to say yes. I don't have those exact figures for you at this moment with this plan, but generally, yes. When I'm doing those types of unit count projections, it's kind of based on a mix, a mix traditionally or previously in, in the, you know, lexicon of planning, there would be 50% or 60% detached homes. You know, but now it's more or less not going to find, like, if I wanted to classify just detached homes, that might be as low as 20 to 30%, but you're also going to have semis, townhomes, and all that kind of stuff making up what I'll call the ground-based units, right? Like, so the ground-based development of those types of, that type of form. In the medium density in the plan area is really where you're going to see more of the multi, multi-family, multi-story type of things, where you're going to have stacked townhomes, or perhaps back-to-back townhomes, and maybe even, you know, small block apartments, things of that nature, so.
I personally really like the aspect of seeing lots more yellow on the map where there'll be lots more low-density housing, so it will reflect to the old neighborhood, it'll look like a neighborhood when you have low-density housing in the middle, then middle, medium density, so it's actually, I appreciate that, actually. I do like the concept of having low-density housing spread throughout the neighborhood. And my another, my next question is, Mr. Mayor, is Option Two proposed almost twice as many stormwater facilities compared to Option One. While preferred concept appears to take middle ground, the preferred concept incorporates drainage, features, and parkland, but it will relocate the northern water course. Can you please explain the cost and implication of this approach?
Through the mayor, to the councilor, the approach is still that, that would be my preferred arrangement, you know, staff professional arrangement. It's not yet determined whether it's feasible to relocate or reallocate or realign that channel. Like I said, that, that property owner is, is doing a cost-benefit analysis on whether or not, you know, it's, it's good for them or not. From a community perspective, from a planning perspective, I see benefit in it. What it does is it limits that, that water course after it's been realigned to only a single road crossing, the road crossing that comes in from the, from Lundys Lane. It removes it from, you know, all the backyards where people are going to throw their grass cuttings over into the, you can, that would be really enhanced next to an already existing environmental area as well, so it's going to increase that. It adds separation from the more intense, you know, mixed-use on Lundys Lane to the lower density and medium density, just adds that extra little bit of separation, and because the way it comes around, that allows us then to have just that single stormwater management pond, as opposed to having to have a pond on either side before that drainage course exit the property down to carry forward. So, that's a benefit, I feel, and of course, the community design works much better. You know, that could occur in the south. As, as we get through, and we, I get the final details of our sub watershed work, you know, the first stop I'm going to be making after this kind of stuff is, is to make arrangements with Conservation Authority, you know, as that work is trickling into me now, we'll have a better understanding and idea as, as, as we get there. But, you know, we want to try and consolidate or have fewer facilities that we have to look after from a, you know, maintenance perspective as well. I'm not sure, hopefully I've, I've covered the answer or the questions for you. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, any, okay, motion by Counselor Peter Angelo, second by Counselor Dubrowski, that we move the recommendation. All those in favor?
Discussion.
But, okay, oh, you had more further, okay, I'm sorry. We've got the motion, discussion, Counselor DeCoco.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In October of 2021, on the Future Strategic Growth Direction, the Intensification Target Report that was brought by staff, they recommended that 65% of our growth be built in the current city's built-up area, which only required 113 additional hectares. Council did not follow staff's recommendation and approved a 50% intensification, which required 272 hectares. That's an extra 159 hectares, hectares that will need to be, need to implement new infrastructure such as roads, water, sewer, wastewater, et cetera, as a, at a cost to the taxpayers and the developers. Staff cited these reasons to approve the 65% growth, that the city's population is aging, that one to two people are living in households, household size has decreased, affordability issues, almost half of the city of Niagara Falls households makes less than $60,000. 86% of Niagara Falls households are not able to afford the price of a new home. Subsidized housing waitlist has grown 69% between 2016 and 2021. 57% of rental housing and 23% of own housing is in core housing needs. I agreed with staff recommendations and voted against the motion that was put forward. This proposed secondary plan is 180 hectares. The original staff proposal was to use 150 hectares of extra land, which is only 21 hectares that would be needed. I do not believe that the increase of our urban boundaries to this extent is beneficial for our residents or our taxpayers, so I will not approve the proposal.
Okay. Any other comments to the motion? Okay, then we'll call the vote, all those in favor. Okay, and that's approved? All right, thank you.
One opposed.
Uh, with, yeah, right, it's approved with one opposed. Counselor DeCoco's opposed. And now, we go to 9.3, so we'll get Counselor Strange back, I think?
Yep.
Okay.
Conflict.
Uh, we've got some people declared conflicts. And for the record, I am also a member of Club Italia, but I don't believe that's a conflict, and I'm going to maintain staying in the meeting. No, it's not a conflict. I've gotten opinion, legal opinion before, that it's not a conflict, so, but it's up to each of us to declare individual, because we don't own the club, we're members there. But again, I caution everybody, pardon me? Okay, we'll just wait for Counselor Strange to come back into the room.
What's that? Yeah, form, yeah. Here's Mike now, you're leaving.
Form is calculated after.
Yeah, correct. Declare the conflicts, one, two, three, four, five, we got five. Is Chris coming back? Is he coming back?
I thought Chris, he didn't declare conflict. Chris went to get Mike.
He went to get you. Did he get you? I know.
It's like the...
Chris went that way, and you came that way, so he's probably looking for you. No, don't move. Stay right where you are. Our CAO's going to look for him.
It's like the spider.
And thanks to staff for the step up. It's, it's a drop. God forbid, don't miss that drop. Sorry, Chris, I'll be with you in just half a second here. Welcome back. All right, now, we're at 9.3, the Northwest Secondary Plan Preferred Concept Plan, which is the area in the northwest quadrant of the city. We've got Chris Miller again, our senior project manager, to walk us through this, and with the objective of trying to stay under five minutes if it's possible. All right, thank you very much. The floor is yours.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Yes, a lot of familiarity here, so I'm going to go skipping through as fast as I can. So, the Northwest Secondary Plan area. The Northwest Secondary Plan, again, initiated in '23, first phase focused on the benchmarks and the existing conditions. The staff report 2518, or 2000, 2518 was brought in March. Council endorsed me going through the second phase. We moved forward on that, went through the same process where we generated conceptual options after hearing all kinds of, through consultation inputs, and we took those to the public. And again, we have Option One, which is in the same fashion as the others, the placemat format outlining the land use arrangement in one option, and then we have a, a second option as well, but I'll just quickly take away the noise and just talk about this Option One that directs, it has, this option was intending to have direct community access from the mountain road off-ramp. So, we came up mountain road, intent was to bring that through into a roundabout Kalar Road and disperse that way. I can tell you right now, MTO has since put the Kai Bosch on that, so that's out the door. So, the higher densities are in the north, in the mixed-use areas, traditionally been the commercial areas for this area. The densities, medium densities are more suitable and situated a little bit towards Kalar Road. Again, we're going to be looking for forward-facing units onto our arterial roads. The park is central, and this would be a community park, not a neighborhood park. The community park could be a much larger facility, it would be one that would have, you know, structure, playfields, might even have, you know, like fountains or those types of things, or splash pads, those kinds of features. It's a community parks, not just serving locals. There's the environmental protections, which is, you'll see on both options, have generally been protected in the same manner, and the stormwater management is represented in the low-lying areas. Skip, skip, skip. And then we had the second option, which I think really the biggest, you know, notable difference there is this option didn't have the roadway coming in opposing the, the off-ramp. But again, we do have all of those skeletal bones and vital organs represented in the, in this plan that we're looking to achieve and make sure we identify, stripping away that information. You can see, you know, the, the collector road network is very simplified, you know, coming in off Montrose Road, one from the north, hooking up Kalar, and one out to Montrose towards the QEW. And the highest densities remain in the north, and we would have forward-facing units onto Montrose, but also the QEW. So, I think the intent here is not to have a 25-foot noise wall, put a face to the community. And environmental protections and the water courses and woodlands remain there, stormwater management is represented again in the low-lying areas. So, the preferred option or the preferred concept, again, we're looking at hybrid situations similar to the previous one where we've looked at the, the best of both, you know, maintains the existing arterial road network that being because the MTO's not interested in, in entertaining that as an option, highest densities remain in the north. Medium densities in the area, I would say that they're in the areas that are really least impacted, so, you know, next to the mixed-use and between the QEW, next to Kalar, between the woodlot and the other wetland area to the, further to the west, and along Kalar Road adjacent to the, the hydro corridor, so there's not a lot of immediate existing neighborhood impact. So, we have the environmental protections, as mentioned, woodlot and the drainage course coming through from the other side of the QEW, and this maintains the, the stormwater management in the locations, in the low-lying areas. So, I'll just skip along on those. In this particular plan, it's the same thing, we have the, the range of density being introduced, you know, at the, at the suggestion of, of the development community, but we also have that practiced. So, this particular one, we're looking at a range of 1,900 units to 3,050 units, population range between 4,250 to 6,650, and the average in there is about 2,475 units or 5,450 population, roughly 2.2 people per unit. And lastly, the timeline remains the same, I'll skip through that. Timeline remains the same, you know, as we ended Phase One, we've just concluded Phase Two. I'm looking for endorsement to move into Phase Three. Thank you very much, five minutes, eight seconds. I don't think I've ever presented that fast.
Wow, that was good. That was good. Counselor Carrio. You need your microphone, Counselor? Sorry, can't hear you.
Has very few owners. It's owned by just a small group of individuals or companies or developers. Can I assume that you've met with all of them, and they've all had a chance to have input?
Through the mayor, to you, council, yes, I've met with just about all of them. There's been one person who did not engage during the, the process, but I've, I've spoken to everyone, most, yeah, I've spoken to everyone, they've come to the meetings, I've had individual landowner meetings on request as well, so yes, this, this particular...
I've talked to a couple of them, and they said you were very, very good, and you engaged them very well. I just wondered if everyone had the opportunity to speak with you.
Anybody who wants to talk to me is welcome.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions of council? Okay, looks like you answered everyone's questions, and we are looking for a motion to endorse the Northwest Secondary Plan Concept. Motion by Counselor Dubrowski, looking for a seconder, Counselor Nuistag, is there any further discussion to this? Okay, we'll call the vote, all those in favor. Okay, and that's unanimous.
Thank you.
Great job, thank you. And our CAO would like to make a comment as well, and I do like to recognize, we do have some of the executive from Club Italia and their solicitor in the audience. Thank you for being here, and we know you've been involved in the process with Chris Miller throughout the, the path, so thank you for being here. Yes, Mr. CAO?
I just want to make a quick comment to council. Doing one secondary plan is usually a large task for a municipality. It's a lot of work. Our staff are doing two, you know, concurrently at, at the same time. It's a, it's a significant project. We're not complete, we're at the stage now where we're going out, and it's, it's been endorsed to, to come back to council at a later date, but I did just want to take a minute to recognize the amount of time and effort that is being undertaken by our planning staff and related staff.
Right, thank you for that. Moving on, oh, so we should get Counselor DeCoco, and is Counselor Patel gone too? Okay, we'll get them both back in. Yeah. Okay, 9.4, Retroactive Gateway Improvement Plan and Municipal Employment Incentive Program Application for Blackburn Parkway. Okay, there's a motion by Counselor Peter Angelo, second by Counselor Nuistag, is there any discussion? Is there any discussion to the motion? Okay, we'll call the vote. All those in favor? Okay, opposed? Okay, with one opposed. Okay, uh, 9.5, Fee Waiver Application for September 2025. There's a motion by Counsel Peter Angelo, seconded by Counsel Carrio, that we approve the recommendations put in by staff. Any discussion to that before we vote? Counsel LaCoco?
One question. I haven't seen a building permit or business license permit before, and I know the application says another, but I'm just wondering why we're doing that? Not that it's a lot of money, I'm just never seen it before. Why are we doing that? Uh, it's for the Nikola Tesla one?
Yep. So, uh, who would, uh, which staff would like to comment on the report? 9.5. Oh, that's Clerks.
Yeah, I mean, although it's unusual, uh, I don't believe that it would be contradictory to the, uh, fee waiver policy.
Okay, thank you. I can sort of see the building permit fee, but the business license fee, to me, that's a little out there. You have to get your business together. I don't know why city funds are paying someone for someone's business license fee.
Uh, in this case, it is a temporary business license. We've done that many times before for festivals, uh, RIBFests, et cetera.
Okay, if there's no further questions, we'll call the vote. All those in favor? Okay, and that's unanimous, thank you. Okay. 9.6, we already did. And there's a motion by Counsel Peter Angelo to move the second consent agenda, seconded by Counsel DeBroski. All those in favor? Okay, and that's unanimous. And just really quickly, we declared surplus part of the Burning Spring Hill on the Niagara Parkway. And at-your-service Niagara Falls Implementation Update, which, uh, Shelley has been working very hard with her team to develop our customer service counter, and it's coming together nicely. And thank you to Counsel for all the input that you've given. Very excited about this. Now, we're on to 11 communications. There's a recommendation that we approve 11. Motion by Counsel Peter Angelo, seconded by Counsel DeBroski, that we approve 11.1 through 11.2. All those in favor? Okay, and that's unanimous. The first was proclamation request for Wrongful Conviction Day on October 2nd. The second was proclamation request for Fire Prevention Week for October 5th through the 11th. So, those were approved unanimously. And then, we've got 12 communications and comments of the city clerk. There, okay, there's, uh, motion by Counsel Peter Angelo, seconded by Counsel Carrio, that 12.1 through 12.4 be received for information. All those in favor? Okay, and that's unanimous. And quickly, that was correspondence from Enbridge regarding natural gas expansion in Ontario, correspondence from Niagara Transit with quarter-two statistics, resolution from the City of Thorold, and correspondence from the Old St. John's Heritage Association. And now, we are at ratification of in-camera. Mr. Clerk?
Yeah, thanks, Your Worship. Uh, Counsel met in-camera earlier this afternoon for the reasons that are stated within the, uh, resolution that was also passed at that time. Uh, there is nothing to ratify. It's just, uh, uh, information for Counsel and direction to staff.
Okay, so, nothing to ratify. We're looking, uh, motions for consideration, there are none. And we do have a notice of motion from Counsel LaCoco. Uh, did you wanna read your motion, Counsel?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Whereas on August 26, 2025, Niagara Falls City Council approved the expansion of automated speed enforcement to local city roads. Whereas on September 9, 2025, Premier Doug Ford stated that he is against speed cameras and called them a tax grab. Whereas Premier Doug Ford said that he wants towns and cities using automated speed cameras to scrap them entirely, threatening he will get, help them get rid of them very shortly if they don't comply. Therefore, be it resolved that Niagara Falls City Council reconsider the decision to expand the use of automated speed enforcement to local city roads, review the cost of the expansion of the automated, automated speed enforcement and the cost to taxpayers if Premier Doug Ford legislates a reversal of this policy and explore alternative, alternative tools and costs to enhance traffic safety.
All right, thank... What's that? Uh, maybe if your microphone, if, if, gotta get that mic on, sorry.
Is this something we could deal with tonight?
Well, we could if we, um, waived our procedural bylaw of giving...
Well, I don't know what the other counselors feel, but I, I just thought...
Okay, well, why don't we get our Clerk just to...
Moving so well.
Well, tell you what, uh, so, two things. Our Clerk is gonna, uh, comment on that. And secondly, our CAO would like to also make comment. And then, at the end of the day, it's up to Counsel to make the final call. Mr. Clerk?
Yeah, in this case, so Counsel could waive, uh, or, sorry, pass a motion to waive the procedural bylaw to, uh, do away with the notice. Uh, again, a reminder that the reason for the notice is also to, to provide staff with some time in case there are some questions or concerns about, uh, what they, uh, what would be entailed within the notice, or, sorry, within the motion. Uh, and then, secondly, this one's a little unique because we just had this discussed on the last Counsel Agenda. Uh, I would consider this would also constitute a, uh, motion for reconsideration, which would require a two-thirds majority.
Okay, and just...
All those things to consider.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. And just before we go back to Counsel, CAO would like to just comment.
No, the Clerk covered it off. There, you know, before Counsel makes a decision, there may be some legal implications that we need to review because, uh, a premier's comment is not binding legislation or, you know, regulations. So, uh, we would have to see what the implications are if we did, uh, if we did reconsider that decision in Counsel prior to the province coming down with rules and regulations, so...
So, it's up to, up to Counsel. Okay, so, you're gonna give it, uh, its due course and deal with it at the next meeting? Yep, that's the, okay, all right, thank you for that. New business. Counsel Patel?
I have a notice of motion. Uh, it just actually, it was one of the, one of the things that comes to you at the, uh, spontaneous. And I didn't have, I didn't hand in my notice of motion on Friday. This is about what happened in Welland that has shaken our whole entire region. The assault of a child is beyond comprehension. Our community shares the same grief as Welland. And we also know that it's not an isolated incident. It's not about assault. In Niagara Falls, we are seeing lots more break-ins, car thefts. There's lots of things that are happening in Niagara Falls. And that is the, it is the result of weak sentencing and weak bail system in our country, our province. I would like to join Welland to ask provincial government and federal government to demand tougher sentencing for repeat offenders, fixing the weak bail system and ending the revolving door of justice. For crime that's serious, it must be jail, not bail. Protecting our children, our homes, and our community must be the top priority. And we stand united in calling for real change. So, I would like to stand in resolution to our local MPs, our provincial, I'm not sure what the attorney general you call, and federal government to ask, support Welland that we are asking for tougher sentencing to. That's called. So, that's a motion.
Okay, thank you for that. So, our Clerks just advised that we should, to, to do this tonight, we'd have to waive the procedural bylaw of two-thirds. So, maybe we could, if you wanna do two and one. And, uh, so, your request that we waive the procedural bylaw of two-thirds?
Yes, two, yes.
And include your motion?
And, uh, and do the resolution and send it to our region, 12 municipalities, to ask them to support this and provincial government and federal government. I, I think Clerk or Mr. CAO would know the right people to send it to.
Yep, to all the usual...
Exactly.
Upper levels of government.
Right.
Okay, gotcha. And our peers, like you said, the local area municipalities?
Exactly.
So, we've got, yeah, folks, you've heard the motion from Counsel Patel and seconded by Counselor DeBroski. Uh, are there any questions to that motion? Okay, we'll call the vote. All those in favor? Okay, and that was unanimous. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Uh, new business? Uh, I saw another hand. You have another one, Counsel Patel?
It's a new business, yes. I think, I don't know if it's motion or new business. This is about, uh, something we are seeing every day on our street is the electric scooters. There are kids riding the scooters without the helmet. They are on McLeod Road, Kalar Road. I actually roll down my windows and sometimes I'm yelling at the kids, like, "Get off the road, you can't be on the road. It's not safe." I was out, I was out there 10 o'clock last night, Sunday. Kids are riding without the lights, without the helmet on the Kalar throughout the evening and night. And they are playing, they are playing stunts and they are playing whatever they're doing on the road. So, I just wanna ask Mr. Nicol, is there anything we can do or implement to have kids wear the helmets? And maybe stop kids from coming on the main street? I understand with the bicycle, you will have to be 16, I think, before you can ride on a main road. I'm not sure.
Uh, Mr. Nicol, any insight?
Yeah, uh, thank you through you, Mr. Mayor, to the Counselor. Um, we have not decided to opt-in as a municipality to allow the e-scooters, the stand-on scooters on city streets. Um, we, um, we know that we could take back, um, a report to Counsel with a bit of information on that because that decision was made a few years ago, or the non-decision was made. Um, with, specifically with respect to safety and where a suitable place to ride those scooters are, we need to look at the bit of the legislation first. If we can opt-in outside of the tourist core areas where I think it might be more suitable, we can take a look at that. And, uh, as well, how we can look at implementing some safety programs. We have a large, um, safety program for school crossing guards right now, too, so we might be able to roll those two things together with, just with respect to getting outreach to kids and safety. But, um, if it's a will of Counsel, we can come back with a report that tries to outline some of the ways we can, uh, address the scooter safety. We have seen an increase in those scooters, and it can be a good last-mile solution, but only if done safely.
Right, thank you. My intention is just to keep the kids safe on the street. It's not about adopting e-scooters in our tourist core area because I, I completely do not agree with having e-scooters in tourist area because there's hardly room to walk. So, I think scooters just would not make sense there. It's just to keep the kids safe in just the residential area. That's what I'm looking for. Because I did talk to bylaw bylaw, and they did tell me that, uh, uh, that falls under Niagara Regional Police jurisdiction to implement the helmet bylaw, but they don't have enough, like, you know, they're stretched thin. They already are struggling with resources, too. I just don't wanna burden them with something more that we can maybe come up with to even help them, or maybe bylaw parking can implement something.
Okay.
So, it's a direction?
Yeah, through you, Mr. Mayor. We'll take direction on that to come back with a report. Um, give us a little bit of time to do some research and look at other best practices and look at other municipalities. And we'll come back with a few ideas on, um, how we can do some outreach for, uh, students and, and young kids and safety on scooters.
Okay, thank you. Uh, yes, Counsel Strange?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I just wonder about the, the recent news about the, about the corridor's ruled on the Hotel Association Court and action against the city's bylaw. Um, can the CAO provide Counsel with an update of how the new tourism entity that is supposed to be created is progressing?
Uh, Mr. CAO?
Thank you for the question, Counselor. Um, the Hotel Association is in active discussions with reformulating, um, you know, reformulating their organization. Um, I could, um, I don't wanna disclose anything that might not be out in the public at this point in time, but I'll, I can endeavor to bring a report, uh, back to Counsel, uh, to provide Counsel with an update on that. Uh, because in the bylaw that Counsel passed, um, I can't remember the exact wording, but it had to be a multi-discipline or multi-stakeholder new, uh, body form prior to January 1st. So, I'll, I'll bring back and update the Counsel.
Okay. Uh, and also, can we, can we create, like, a preliminary budget for the city's, uh, you know, 50% or whatever it is of the mat for beautification, graffiti, weeds, flowers, cleanup, uh, panhandlers, festivals, events, parades, uh, tourism-related infrastructure? Are we going, you know, we're going into our, a budget cycle, so can we get something back for budget?
Uh, yeah, as part of the budget process, we'll do that. And I think as part of the budget process, too, we would like to see the tourism entity organization also present their plan for the mat tax, so it's publicly disclosed. Uh, so, we'll treat it as if they're an agency board or commission, uh, similar to a library where they'll come and, and make that presentation. So, we'll notify them of that. Uh, we, uh, have been working on the numbers because it's the first year and, you know, and we did have the court case outstanding for quite some time uh, before it was ruled upon. So, now, we have more clarity in, in, uh, you know, in what we're going to get, uh, what we're gonna get moving forward.
Yeah, and I just, I would love all of Counsel, obviously, to be, uh, you know, united and, and make plans and make decisions on behalf of all those funds, too.
So, uh, for clarity, there's two budgets, right? One from the entity and one for the city?
That's correct.
That's right, okay, got it. New business? Any other new, Counsel DeBroski? And then, of course, uh, Counsel Peter Angelo, who we got, of course. Yes, Counsel DeBroski?
Thanks. Uh, years back, I think maybe five or six years back, um, Counsel at the time, we adopted the, the Slow Down Sign Campaign on the roadways, like, all the signage that people can go to City Hall, pick up a sign. We use them as traffic, traffic calming measures. I swallowed a lot of saliva at once. Um, I was just wondering if, I don't wanna put Mr. Nicol on the spot, but if we could get an update on how that program, I think it's still in existence. I, I see many signs kinda on my travels through the city that, that are up, but wanted to get some feedback from staff on how well that camp, campaign progressed, um, how many people are utilizing it. And then, maybe we could look at ways, and we're talking about school zones and, and keeping our children safe within our, our community, obviously is the, of utmost importance. Maybe we could look at what other municipalities are doing in those school zones. I know, just for consistency's sake, in the north end of the city, um, in front of one school, we have, um, I don't know what they are, but it's like a, a speed radar where, when you're going too fast, it'll tell you to slow down. I know in other municipalities on roadways near schools, there's bullards that, that kinda slow traffic down in those areas. But, um, I don't know if this is a motion or a direction to staff, but wanted to get some feedback on how that campaign's doing, um, at this time. And I noticed on the website, you have to call City Hall to actually get a sign. Maybe we can, we can streamline that where it's, you know, an email or a social media message. Um, having to call and go through an extension, even though we're working towards better customer service, um, it might be something we look at, just where we expedite the process and we get more signs out, um, in front of people's homes. But, uh, again, didn't wanna put Eric, Mr. Nicol, on the spot, But again, didn't want to put Eric, Mr. Nickel on the spot, but at the same time, maybe, you know, looking forward to future meetings if we can get some feedback, that'd be appreciated.
Yeah, don't put him on the spot, we're going to put you on the spot. Yeah, Mr. Nickel?
Happy to be on the spot. Yeah, thank you through, through the mayor. It's a great question. The slowdown campaign, just like a lot of campaigns, they sort of ramp up, there's a lot of excitement, and then things sort of change, the tune changes, and we see some saturation of those signs. I think it's about time to maybe do a bit of a refresh and maybe an update. And what I want to remind council of is last meeting, I mentioned that the staff would be coming forward with a road safety action plan that was intended to be funded by the proceeds of the automated speed enforcement component. That's still planning to come this fall. So that is a, an opportunity to look at all the tools in our tool chest, so to speak, for, for driver safety, for slowdown sign campaigns and things like that. So that campaign is one component of that larger program. What we'll do is bring forward some of the conclusions, some of the findings from that campaign as part of our road safety action plan. I don't think we have any specific empirical data that can say, you know, it caused this many people to slow down, simply because we're not measuring that all the time. But it's, you know, when, when we tell residents that, you know, I'm sorry, we can't put a speed bump here because it's in our trailer road, and we can't have police cars here all the time, you know, it is the one small measurable thing that we can do, that if it only slows one person down, and that's the one person that saves a life, you know, we've done a good thing. So we'll be bringing back that information in that presentation to council in a report in a couple of cycles.
Okay, thank you for that. Well, if there's no more new business, that, oh, oh, councillor Peter Angelo, no, no, councillor Peter Angelo still has a...
Yeah, thanks, Your Worship. Just wanted to address a couple of things. The first one is the NSNT trail crossing at Dorchester Road. If you're walking on the NSNT right now and you come to Dorchester Road, I, I think staff are, I guess of the opinion that pedestrians should be walking to Freeman Street and then crossing with the light. I see a lot of other municipalities, Your Worship, that don't do this. They just simply put the pedestrian paint down on the, on the street, and then they have those little flashing lights that people can just press, and then it flashes yellow or flashes red, and then they actually cross and the cars stop. Can we not get something like that on Dorchester Road for the NSNT? That is the only crossing that we have right now, because all the other ones, I believe that if you go to the west side of the, of the Queen Elizabeth Way, then it's only between Montrose and Kaler Road. And on the east side of the Queen Elizabeth Way, it's only that crossing at Dorchester Road. So there would be future ones. I, like, I think in terms of coming off of the Millennium Trail and then getting to the Niagara Parks Commission Trail, it would be great if there was some type of crossing there. And I know you've mentioned in the past that there's going to be a new turnaround or a new turnabout at that intersection there where Whirlpool Road meets Niagara Parkway?
Roundabout.
Exactly. So hopefully, there's some type of pedestrian crossing as well. But it'd be nice to have one on Dorchester Road at the NSNT line as well.
Yes, and I think Mr. Nickel can advise us on when we're looking to do the roundabout as well. With the, it's a partnership with the Parks Commission. Mr. Nickel, not to put you on the spot again.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor, I'm ready. Through the, the mayor, to the councillor, it's a great question on the, the crossing of Dorchester. So it was our initial intention to include a individual pedestrian signal, that's the yellow flashers. For budget constraints, we had to hold off on that in the budget and in the delivery of the program, but it is in our 2026 capital as a priority project. What we're proposing actually is an individual traffic signal, so a red, yellow, green signal for drivers, simply because they're, they're comparable in costs. Surprisingly, a full signal, I mean, two-way signal is, it shouldn't be, but it's, you know, marginally higher than with the yellow flashers. And we feel with the nature of schoolchildren and the importance for people to actually stop, we feel that's a higher level of protections warranted. So Niagara region will be designing that and building that signal for us at our expense, and we have them engaged already to start moving forward with design. It will be a 2026 build. With respect to the crossing at Whirlpool and Niagara Parkway, for cyclists to cross it, the sightlines don't work for any other type of crossing there with the curvature of Whirlpool Road. The roundabout is the best way to slow cars down on Whirlpool Road so that cyclists have at least a slower vehicle to, to try to find a gap to cross. It is in our 2027 capital program. Would need some time in 2026 to finish design, and for Niagara Parks to pitch in their share. It is about a $4 million project to do all that work, but that's our, our current plan for our capital program from Whirlpool.
Yeah, and I appreciate that, Your Worship. I mean, I, I don't know if people understand how important the NSNT is to the people that live around there. The Millennium Trail was, is great, I should say, but it doesn't have, like, it's not sandwiched on both sides by residential. NSNT is sandwiched on both sides by residential. Every time I go on it, I try to talk to the people that are on there, and I say, how do you like the trail? They can't stop talking. I mean, they can't stop talking about it, like, you know. And then when you tell them that there's going to be an extension, they're like so excited for it because it's right in the middle of all the homes, you know, whereas the Millennium Trail, I think there was only two sections that were bordered by homes, the other three weren't. So it's got some great usage, so hopefully, we can get some good connections with it as well. The other item that I had, Your Worship, is just the Mewburn lands that the city owns. I wanted to see what the status was on those and whether or not staff were going to be coming back with any type of recommendations. I know that the Niagara Skartment Commission traditionally goes through a 10-year plan, and we're going through our official plan update at the same time. I know in that area, I think our lands are designated as a specialty crop, and I'm not sure who's been out there, Your Worship. I know that through the Park in the City or the Environmental Action Committee, we do tree plantings out there every year. TD Bank, TD Canada Trust, they, they plant little seedlings out there. The first year that we were out there, it was, it was very hard to put a shovel in the ground. We didn't ask them to do that again. So the second year, we actually had to bring someone out and prepare the land till it so that they could actually get the tree in the ground. I don't think there's any specialty crops growing there, Your Worship, so I don't know what our plan is for those lands, but it would be nice to sort of be aligned with the Niagara Skartment Commission's 10-year update and our official plan, if we ever are looking at doing something on those lands in the future.
Yeah, I think our CAO is going to weigh in on this.
Yeah, and I believe it, I believe the report options are going to come to council in October, I'm looking at, I'm not sure which date in October, and, but I believe that report will be in camera, or a portion of that report will be in camera for council going forward, but I'll just confirm with Kira.
Thank you, Worship, through you to the councillor. Yes, it is in October, and I'm just looking here, but I believe it is October, sorry.
Signy's writing it, so maybe first or second meeting, Signy?
The second, second meeting.
Second meeting.
Second meeting in October. And in terms of the long-term kind of vision and, and what you were speaking about, it was about specialty crop, we did receive a letter about that through our official plan review. We are looking at that area. Obviously, specialty crop is based on, on land soil classification, so it's something we're, we're looking at considering, but it's something that the region, when they passed that designation, it was based on that soil classification. So we're seeing what additional study work they had in association with that that would assist us in our official plan review and that correspondence we received. So it will be part of the official plan review. Whether or not they align with the Niagara Skartment 10-year review, I don't know. We're, we're looking, obviously, in the new year to bring that official plan forward to you, and whether or not the two align will be a question at this point.
Okay.
Councillor, did you, was there any thought around that specialty crop test? Because I understand there is some test or there is some kind of study that can be done to determine if it's a specialty crop? I mean, is there any advantage to doing that sooner than later, so we can rule that out? But I think we all know that you can't grow anything out there next to a dump, but wondering if we should get that study to confirm that so that we are prepared for our next steps with what we're going to do there?
Thank you, Worship. So again, it's something we could do, we don't have budget for that, but something that council could consider. I don't have a price for that at this point in time. If council directed us to do so, we could get a price and bring it back to council for consideration. We do know, just based on some other pricing quotes we're getting just on peer reviews, the cost is quite significant, so, but we can provide that to you.
As part of the report, we'll put the cost in.
I've been given information it's actually not expensive, so maybe we have different information, but I was told like a low number, something that would be easily affordable. So I, I don't want to, you're the experts, but I did talk to some people that do this, and the cost sounded like it could be affordable. So I don't know what your direction is, councillor, you still have the floor.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm happy if you're bringing your report back with all the information. I just want to make sure that, you know, if the city does choose to study the land and look at whether or not it is a specialty crop, that if we come to a conclusion on the designation of it, that that can get into the Niagara Skartment Commission plan, obviously, it will get into our official plan. But I believe that the NEC's plan, I, don't quote me on this, I mean, you guys probably know better, but is open until the end of October, or is that when it's coming? I'm pretty sure.
Thank you, Worship, through you to the councillor. And I'd have to get back to you on the exact dates for the NEC plan. On, on, I can get back to you in an email.
I just don't want to miss that, I just don't want to miss that window with the NEC because I know that that comes around only once every 10 years, that's all. So if we miss that window, then I guess it really doesn't matter what we say in our official plan, you know, it has to align with what the NEC are saying. And, and I think the NEC is open right now to options.
So what would you recommend, Ms. Dolch, if, again, depending on this 10-year, we just don't want to miss the window? And, and if some things need to happen within a certain period of time, what's the best way to do this so that we don't, just unless we have a way of finding out what that window is?
Thank you, Worship. You know, what I would suggest is if you do want to go ahead with the, the agricultural impact study to determine and the soils analysis and review, you can provide us a general budget if you wanted to consider that. I would suggest, just based on what we're hearing, I would say probably around, I'm going to say at least $30,000 at this point. So if you wanted to direct us to, to look at that at this point, we could obviously have an upset limit, and anything above that, we'd have to come back to you, but we could start reaching out. We do have planning rosters, which include people with agricultural study capabilities, so we don't, we, we can just use people off our roster. So those are the people I was, I was inquiring, so I do have to pick from that roster, but it can happen rather quickly if, if you direct us to do so.
Okay. Personally, Your Worship, I think it's important to establish the timeline first, and when do we have to know by? So I, I think, you know...
What she's suggesting is maybe we give her the leeway to do it if that timeline...
And that's fine. And if that's not, and if that's not acceptable, then perhaps we can look to see if any landowners in the area have already done a study, and if they have, whether or not we can just simply use the findings that they have.
So do you want to make a motion just to give her the authority?
I'll make a motion, sure.
Okay, so motion by councillor Peter Angelo, seconded by councillor Carrio, that we give planning authority up to $30,000 for the necessary studies and to confirm the, the window for the 10-year Niagara Skartment Commission plan?
I think the timeline is important because if we can't get our study done within the timeline, then we're going to have to look at other options such as neighboring landowners and whether or not studies have been done there.
Discussion to the motion? Okay, we'll call the vote. All those in favor? Okay, that's unanimous, thank you for that. Councillor Dubrowski, did you have more new business? Did you have your, no, okay. Was there any other new business?
Bylaws, Your Worship?
Uh, the bylaws.
For second and third?
All right, councillor Peter Angelo, given the bylaws, the first, second, and third reading, seconded by councillor Strange, councillor LaCoco?
I'm opposed to bylaw 2025-110 and 2025-111.
Okay, thank you for that. We'll call the, oh, yeah, councillor Patel? Sorry, can't hear you, got to get the microphone.
I had a conflict, 2025-1110. So I wrote it down 100%.
Okay. Okay, we'll call the vote. All those in favor? Okay, and that's unanimous. And motion for adjournment? Councillor Carrio, councillor Neusteg, all those in favor? All right, good. Oh, councillor Patel votes against adjournment. She'd like to stay. Okay. I didn't see her hand go up.